All right. Good evening, thank you. The meeting was called to order at six thirty-three. One of our more student members of committee noted we weren't being recorded. And another student put us online or team member. So we had the calls in order. We had the approval of minutes, which there weren't any. We had president speak and there were nobody to speak. New business was a discussion of, a brief discussion completed. Location studies and then we jumped into the promotion. Or discussion of temporary housing for station thirteen and that's where we are at right now, so.
Yeah, we were kind of having losing this conversation.
We were.
We didn't really have any discussion about location studies.
No, we didn't.
So are we gonna come back to that or are we done with that for tonight?
We, well, what do you, well, what should, let's.
I thought it was on old business.
What's that?
I thought that was listed in new business.
Oh, I apologize.
Yeah, it's listed in new business. It is old business, but.
It is old business, but we hadn't really discussed. I don't know, I didn't think we had.
Do you want to come back to it on business?
Let's, okay, let's, let's move that. I make a motion to move the discussion of the location studies to old business all in second, second, all in favor? All right, good. All right, so let's move on to. I think it's time to make a motion about temporary housing to station thirteen. So what would that draft motion feel and look like?
Do we, do we have enough information to make the motion? Because we need to help, as you were saying, we need to have some idea of what their requirements would be, what they would want. The town typically requires the motion. If the motion is to seek the funding, it has to be specific. If the motion is just to get a spec together, why don't, why don't we, then that's, then that is a lot easier.
Yeah, my, my impression was you were, you were kind of looking to get everybody on the same page as far as agreeing that that's the.
But I thought we were.
As far, as far as, you know, financing and stuff, I think that's a, you know. You can probably look at that later, but if only you get that motion on the table to.
Well, that's it, yeah. I mean, the motion just has to be that we agree, or I, I believe that we agree on that a. That temporary building is, is important, or that, that's the way to go and.
So you're looking for someone. I just sat and just drafted like words to something very quick. Do you, do you want to, you look at a language or for us to agree on? An emotion or?
Well, do we agree that a temporary building is the right course of action?
So what are the options that were, that were choosing between?
Okay, well, it was, it was either. A temporary structure at station thirteen at that location.
Like a trailer.
A trailer or a modular home.
Yep.
I think temporary structure or, or rebuilding the inside or creating that temporary structure inside station thirteen. And or another option was the former rectory for St. Jude's. Those are the three options that I remember. Am I, does that sound right?
Yes, and we discussed last time that if I remember correctly, we had agreed that the. The St. Jude wasn't going to work because it was too far away. They'd have to drive to get to a station in order to get to a station to do something. Should there be a fire or anything along those lines? And that building out the interior of station thirteen was impractical because if anything needed to be done to fix station thirteen, we'd have to tear it all down just in order to rebuild and fix.
Yeah, that, that's what it's.
So.
Not to get a hundred percent back on your investment, but you get something back, right? Versus loving what you built inside there.
Right. Okay.
I'm just trying to kind of.
No, no, I moved that back to whatever. Very important to them. No, that's wonderful. So. Do you have a motion for yet?
It, it's, again, there's nothing that. It's, I just spitballed it. Motion to purchase a temporary building suitable to meet the operational needs, including unlimited twenty-four seven housing for paid staff. Allow you to return full operation to station thirteen on a temporary basis, not in perpetuity.
That sounds great. If you type that really fast in this computer.
It maybe is too long.
I guess, no, it's not, but would you mind handing that to me and I can type it?
I'd be happy to write this legibly and give it to you.
Let's do that.
I'm not here, so if you.
Let's do that.
So Tyler. The only thing I would say is instead of saying motion to purchase would be motion to recommend purchase instead of just.
Yeah, right. We're advisory committee. That's perfect. That's exactly what I was imagining.
Recommend.
Well, I think that, that's what we would do. We want, we be somebody.
We would send it up to the board of selectmen.
Exactly. Board of selectmen and then they would plead to the board.
Alex and Ron, is that acceptable?
Yeah, the only question I had was, did you have any conversations with Senator Gordon?
I called, I haven't got a call back.
All right, so I did speak with him today.
Yes.
Do you want to pitch on that now?
Please, yeah, far away.
Uh, so they are working.
Chair recognizes Alex.
Oh, now we're official all of a sudden.
So Senator Gordon is working with the governor's office of trying to find the housing.
Okay.
Uh, he's stated at this point, willing to, it's not in a position to be able to pay for it. Just because we can't pass the town budget, uh, not knowing where we come from or how to get one. As a municipality, so they've been working with other state agencies. Um, in Connecticut to, to make it work. Um, there's nothing in the state. So what they've started is a search with their states that they work with normally.
Sure.
Excellent. To get something. The governor's office is the one that's working on it. So with, yes, Department of Emergency Services, Public Protection. Uh, they're the ones working on it. They're the ones that are trying to find out where to get it from. Um, without the town having to fund it. The only thing, and, and so they, they requested a couple of documents, one they want to build a report. From the building official on the status of the building. What they don't want to do is put us back up there with the trucks and say that the building is not safe. So they want the building official to actually say that the building is safe to be in. That we can operate the rest of the trucks, stuff like that, out of that building. Whether that can happen or not, that's the point. I think we can. I mean, we've been doing it for the last year and a half, but. The building official needs to actually put something on paper saying. Uh, the other thing is. There needs to be an end goal. They, they're very well aware that this committee is brand new, that it's just starting to research of what areas to go on. But it can't be a, this is gonna be the next twenty years, being something that they're borrowing or paying for from somewhere else. Um, so I think that's why he wanted to talk to Andy. Um, so I did send Andy his phone number. Uh, but that was as of today. I think it's pretty easy and pretty honest to be able to say.
And we have said.
It's coming to say, this committee has started to develop. A plan for a repair or replacement of the building that will be asking the voters to fund.
What he did say.
That's all we can say.
Correct.
What Andy did, or sorry, not Andy. I just watched him walk in with pizza, so I got a little bit.
Anybody's hungry.
Geez, I should shove dinner down too.
Sorry.
So one of the things that Senator Gordon did say was. This request only helps the future of being in the night climate. If we're able to say, the state of Connecticut is providing housing for firefighters because their station is inadequate. There, it, it's falling apart, however. It gives us a stronger case to get bond money out of this. Uh, quicker than, sooner than later.
And a little less likely for the me twos out there in other towns?
Correct, right. So. Yeah, it's a battle for every town to try to be the most interesting to the bonding committee. Correct. Now, the state of Connecticut is providing housing to firefighters to stay in. Because of the shape of their, because they can't be in the village.
Correct.
It makes our push are stronger.
But I can see where they would also, as, as the commission might want to, just to encourage the me twos out there, you know? Well, we need some money for housing too, aren't we?
Well, so they, they've done this in the past, not the, the, the housing part is kind of new. But they have done, uh, firehouse replacements. I think it was East Hartford, the station five, East Hartford. Um, they, there was a state bond that replaces that, replaced that entire fires. Um, so this isn't something new for state bonding.
Yeah, the issues like you may have touched on, I wasn't listening, whether it's federal, state, um, it's, it's gotta be a shovel ready project.
Correct.
It's gotta be, you know, ready, ready around.
Uh, and what they did say is that they may be able to help with part of that of their, you know? If this is, the state's providing money or doing something now, they can help along the way. Is what Senator Gordon was trying, was getting at today. So.
I think that gives a lot of strength to, that we recommend this rather than, that, you know, we recommend. This is our course of action that we're recommending, that rather than we want to purchase it.
You know, so I did some, I did some looking around, just internet research, trying to find ideas. I did not reach out to any of the vendors because I didn't think it was appropriate for someone other than the chair or the committee to authorize.
Right, right, right.
I did find that, um. Looking. Uh, looking at, there are a couple dealers in Connecticut that sell mobile homes. And there are, um, there's actually one particular one on one of the sites was brand new, two bedroom. Two bath, because I have the two bedroom happened to be two bath. Um, and then a kitchen and a full living room, so it would give you the day room.
Would, would, would the living room be sufficient for a daytime room?
Yeah. And it was a, it's a fourteen foot wide. I don't know, fifty-three foot long or whatever it was.
And you got a square footage, taking your square footage.
It's fourteen by fifty-three, I think.
Well, it's like, it's like hundred thirty-six or something like that, yeah.
Yeah, and.
Yeah, like a thousand square feet, yeah.
And it was forty-four thousand dollars if you bought it.
Yeah, they are, they're rather economical.
Yeah, there's.
Yeah. I was really surprised.
Yeah, right.
Definitely just where, but then you have, have obviously the, which isn't huge, the added cost, you got to do some type of plumbing.
You do the plumbing, right.
Right.
Weather, weather plumbing.
Yeah.
Well.
You gotta get, you gotta get it here.
Right, second, fourth season.
Yeah, yeah.
Probably better.
I think our ancillary costs are.
We're gonna get that out.
Right, and because, and, and again, because I wasn't gonna reach out to the vendors, there are many places that rent temporary housing, like if you have a fire at your house.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They bring out the trailer and they park it in your yard and they tie it into your sewer near electric. They do all those hookups. For people who have fires at their house, it's the same kind of thing. It's a mobile home. And there are a bunch of companies in, around Connecticut that do that for that industry and.
Oh, you got the, the notes, but. Did, assuming like.
The difference, Ben.
If you hook up the sewer, the, is that camper right now tied into the septic? No, okay.
No, we made at least a. Yeah.
Ninety-five percent of the time it's me that has it anyway.
Now, and I think that was the advantage of the, the location Alex was talking about. Running back along the parking lot towards the propane tank could put the back of the trailer near that septic tank. So tying it would be easier, but, um, so anyway, there are multiple companies that rent the trailers for that purpose. I have no idea what the rental is, and I could see in three or four years with the rental, you might chew up that whole forty-four thousand dollars.
Yeah.
If you wouldn't pay to just find one. So it would be good to figure out what that, what that economic thing is, you know, like it turned out with the trailer you guys have right now. Was probably gonna be cheaper to own it than to rent one.
Would you pay for that?
I think they, fourteen thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it was thirteen, thirteen one, I think it was, and then the market kicked in the insurance. For it.
Sure, sure.
The warranty. The war, sorry, the warranty.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that if anything broke, the, the fear was that if something breaks and God knows how much, you know, things are coming.
When did you buy it?
Longview RV. They did call the other day and ask if we're interested in buying a camper, but. It's the season. So I would think that that would be a next thing if we were moving forward with this. Would be. To try to come up with a recommendation of what method.
Okay.
That would be procured and.
The minute this is presented, say, you know, assuming that committee, you know, votes favorably good, so we send them along to the board of selectmen, who must gotta go with how much?
Right.
Yeah, well, right.
So you gotta figure out the method and then get the prices.
Yeah, so. I mean, we can, let's, even if we ballpark the problem. And so that we have some interpretation, um. The motions that we make with landing a zoning, I mean, they can be quite lengthy, the motion is almost like a, pretty much what that person did to.
So if we as a committee, if we as a committee are voting to recommend this. Then by the time. We actually send the recommendation up, we could add detail to it, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Because we're only recommend, the board of selectmen will have to put it all in detail in the correct format in their motion.
They're, they're gonna be the ones to make the formal motion to allocate the.
Right, so they have, they have to, they have to all the dollars and everything in there, right?
Right, 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 so. But can we say something like, um. I mean, you, you just threw out some good terms that, uh, temporary housing, uh, seems to run in the range of. I don't know, forty to sixty thousand dollars, is that a fair stretch?
I would argue. There's cargo container.
Yeah, there's so many. I was looking at these tiny homes.
Those are like fourteen thousand dollars on Amazon.
I know.
So anywhere from like fourteen thousand to a hundred thousand.
But, I mean, really, but we're thinking, see, no, but, but thinking that, thinking that way, these, these tiny homes, they're what, three hundred square feet? You go like two of them for sixty thousand dollars. I mean, each, 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 uh, first responders would have their own place. And then you'd end up with two of these places probably, I mean, there'd be, that, that's no more septic, no more water, no more resource than one, two bedroom. I mean, it's.
So you don't get the, uh, day room.
You don't get the day.
That you would prefer to have.
Yeah, you don't get that.
You know, the advantage of being.
You can buy a, you can buy a house space.
You can buy a.
Yeah, right. Buy a purple.
When a camper, they ask for a little sand and some moonlighting during the summer, maybe a, a fire pit.
Yeah, put the awning on top of.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, yeah. There are a lot of options out there. There, there's all those, there's, there's a lot of like, like Fred was saying, it's container, all kinds of things.
That, uh.
Like you might want in. That are available and, uh, can I? Can I say that the committee is open to all forms of temporary housing commercially available? Uh, with a, I guess, because I, I, I think more conversations better. And we don't know what the governor might come back with, so. Right now, we have the first, the motion Tyler Tyler has did a good job. The committee recommends the town. Uh, acquire a temporary building suitable to meet the operational needs, including but not limited to twenty-four seven housing. Of paid staff allowing, allowing for return full operation to station thirteen on a temporary basis, not in perpetuity. That's our first draft. The motion. That would go to the first select. So we want to give it more detail, a little more substance. What else could we put into this motion? I'm just thinking, you know, Peter and Matt, they're gonna say, what do they, how is it gonna go? Right?
So don't, so don't we need to? So we have a choice of either approving the motion and going to discussion and then potentially modifying the motion, amending it, I mean. Or we can keep discussing and narrow down more what we're actually recommending. Can we pull together enough information tonight to recommend something or we probably need to talk to one of these rental people and get a price?
Well, well, first, their needs, they said, right? Two bedrooms, two bathrooms and one day room.
Well, two bedrooms and a day room and a kitchen probably, right?
Kitchen area. Well, so that, if you get to that point. Then you can make the recommendation.
I, I, I think you, you got it. Two bedrooms, two bedrooms, need bath. Space. I don't think you need two baths.
No, okay, right, okay.
And.
A bath.
A living room space is what's for a day room.
Right. It is. So that would be, then you're kind of narrowing it down and get, and would that be adequate then, we can have, is that adequate?
So the one thing that we had to be careful, so we were looking at the construction trailers before. Uh, because those were larger than a regular camper, you could technically make a couple of bedrooms. Uh, they made a lot of them that had a bathroom. Um, but it, they don't come with showers.
I agree.
They, because of fires and contaminants and all of that heavy stuff, they actually have to have a shower. Uh, showing a place for them to shower. Um, so as long as it means.
And if it's built as a mobile home, it's built to certain safety standards.
That's right.
That was the other.
I think the construction trailer idea is out, I think.
I, I.
I'm describing what we're looking for.
And I just want to make sure, yeah.
Yeah, I, the con, the competition I had with Senator Gordon and Tammy Ducey was more along the lines of a residential type.
Right.
Yep. Mobile home hyphen. Trailer, I should have covered terminology.
Mobile home, I think it's kind of what we're talking about, yeah.
So before making a motion, shouldn't we narrow it down?
More to.
On your head.
This is the one, this is how much it costs. Let's put it together.
You know, that's a great, I, I don't really know the answer.
Because like you said, Andy, they're gonna ask, they're gonna say, what's it gonna be? Come, come back to us.
Size, size and cost.
What's the cost gonna be? Where do you get it? You know, answer all the questions first.
Which we all agree that, you know, it needs to be done. Yeah, I, I, I wouldn't want to do this till after the budget, yeah, it's going.
I don't think we'll get there before that anyway.
We have time to like, we have time to hash.
We have five weeks till the new.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Fiscal year anyway, so there's not much time to get through recommending to the board of selectmen. The board of selectmen take it to the board of finance to recommend it back to the board of selectmen to call it down.
Yes, well, you need to some really, or if you.
Because.
Point on narrowing down exactly where you're looking.
Right.
Get some prices and include that in the motion and kind of do it in one shot.
Right, it would be wonderful to have brochures and say, this vendor could do this in September for this amount of money. This one can do one in October for this amount of money.
And then you'll have your ancillary costs.
And throw everything out there. Throw tiny homes, throw container. I mean, I, I think. An abundance of information regarding this, but probably, it's only what's.
You put it in the motion that way, like you said.
I think, I, I agree.
Better go forward.
Yeah, yeah, I think. So one conversation, we're recording and it gets confusing for people if we start totally talking, Chinese is not allowed. Um, I, I just wanted to say what I have here, what I just wrote down was. The committee mobile and not, not in perpetuity. The building would need to have two bedrooms at a minimum. Two, two bedrooms, bath, shower, day room, full kitchen, day room, living space, full certificate of occupancy with all standard life safety considerations. We've been massaged that language as forward.
You have so many considerations, well.
Yes, uh.
You know, anybody?
Nah, I got no facts there.
Sure. I could talk to Mike if you.
Yeah, no, we'll, we'll, we'll talk. I mentioned it to him. And he just said, well, no temporary structures are allowed, like all about fires. You know, when you're rebuilding as well, there's that, and then that's kind of where it ended, so. He was leaving and we were like, you know, don't.
And all those shows go to ZB.
Well, that's it, and then that may be, uh. And.
Most people make sense.
Well, it's funny you mention that because so often we run into something that is new, like. You think how long it takes to build, it used to be two years you have a house built. That used to be kind of the standard, right? For foundation to move in was twenty-four months or so. Now it's, not, even sooner.
I did when the six months.
Yeah, there you go. But I mean, but I mean, even just from clearing the land and everything.
Maybe the builder.
But now it's, but now it's a lot longer. I've heard people waiting, you know, six, nine, ten, almost for windows.
Yeah.
So.
Supply chain.
Right, the supply chain, but I mean, maybe that is the way in the world. Uh, to try to get a plumber in can take months sometimes, so. If our zoning regulations say, you know, a temporary structure can only be up for so many days, that's probably based on data that is old. So it may be time that sometimes we do have to go in and say, gosh, we.
Well, can, can this, like, be, it's an emergency.
Well, right, and, but it's also okay to change your regulation. We go all the time. We go, this is archaic, this was done in the seventies. And then sort of like a accessory dwelling, if they weren't allowed. Then spring court said they are, and then the state said they are, so we have to change our regs, so they happen quite regularly, so I haven't explored that. But I'm, I'm thinking that that may be another, something, not that we're doing it just because of this committee, but maybe it's time.
Well, then into the cornerbacks during this.
Well, that's. I know, but I.
But that was in the eighties, seventies, eighties.
Five or six of those.
Right, so those, they were able to get those, you know, that's part of that though, they're in there all.
I don't even know.
They do have some different.
Went to, uh.
Yeah, I mean, that was done in the seventies and, I mean, zoning regulations really came in in the mid-seventies, right?
Very crazy.
Seventies.
Yeah.
Building code wasn't even enforced till like seventy-four, I think.
Really?
Yeah, and so was, it was probably that new fangled building code, we're not gonna worry about that. Zoning, shmoaning, whatever.
Yeah, that's it. All right, so we're, we're good there, so. I mean, this isn't gonna be a secret, uh, that even if we do a draft motion, so.
I think it'll be helpful if I may, Andy, is, um, because we have parallel efforts going on here.
We do?
We do. I spoke with, uh.
No, I know, that wasn't a question, I was agreeing.
I followed up with Senator Gordon and Representative Ducey today.
He didn't return my call.
I was lucky.
He's a doctor. But then I, I didn't realize he was a doctor, I didn't.
And the medical doctor, I imagine his day is not always his own. At any rate, his assistant Adrian is working on this.
Okay.
Uh, diligently for the last three and a half, four weeks. Um, and what he shared with me, and I, I believe he also communicated with you, Alex.
Yeah.
Is that, um, oh, he's contacted Connecticut National Guard. They have nothing at the moment. Um, he's working with the State Department of Emergency Services. The, the key linchpin here is that this is a slower process in terms of them locating something for us. Unless we declare, this is an emergency, that's absurd. This is not an emergency. Um, that, that would be like saying we're in a tornado condition. Then all these agencies out pursuit of government entities from FEMA to God knows what, he mentioned like ten of them to me over the phone. All jump into action as they should. But I, I, I would be hard pressed myself to say this is an emergency.
Right.
And, and, and we're, we're better off working with them, so. Well, I think what's confusing, they also talked about to Tammy Ducey, because Senator Gordon is, has the ear of Mr. Blumenthal or Senator Blumenthal in Washington. But was unable to get ahold of either Murphy or Courtney.
Okay.
However, Tammy was. Uh, so she has already discussed this with Joe today.
Excellent.
Following our phone call, but I think what's lacking is some sort of generic specification. Of the things we just said, two bedrooms, day room, kitchen, two bathrooms, uh, shower and life safety support.
Mm-hmm.
If, 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 if we knew what that was, like, like a generic specification for that. Mobile home.
Now, you, you mentioned that to me, so you're.
Now we have that. Is this enough for you, do you think?
If we have that, can make that motion and get that information to all the people working for us, all these legislators and senators and staff assistants. Who knows what they will, they'll turn up.
So it would be great. Well, what, what if we don't call it a motion? What if we just call it, what if we draft a motion to make a group of concepts? Just call it that. And to keep it fairly high level, keep it, I don't want to say vague, but keep it somewhat non-specific because.
I think motion is, is probably better.
No, but a motion is for a proof of concept rather than a motion to go. And you know what, just because, I don't know.
What concept are we trying to prove? Which part of that?
Well, we, we wanted, what, what, what Peter, what I'm hearing Peter say is that we need to be able to share what we're talking about with a lot of people early. So if we draft a motion that we're gonna send to the selectmen. That's different than saying, this is our concept, a proof of concept, and we want to, we want to throw that out there for a lot of people to look at. It doesn't paint us into a corner, but it lets everybody start to talk about it. People that are outside our circles, way outside. And it gives them something to hold. This is what they need.
So the concept that we want to prove is whatever this, we agree this, this housing is gonna be.
That's what I think we need a specification, a generic specification, a capture of all the things we just said we want.
I think something like.
Without getting too. Well, right, right, because if somebody says, well, we can't give you that, we can give you a four bedroom, you know, like, oh, well, we don't want that, of course. Right, we don't, we don't want to. Right, we don't want to paint ourselves into a corner where we say, well, yeah, that is what we said, but. We wanted the best thing we could possibly get. This would be at a minimum.
Minimum criteria.
Minimum criteria. Well, how, what if we just call, what if, uh, could we make a motion on specifications? We make a motion that we approve or we agree that these would be the specifications. Or we agree that temporary housing is the most viable, so I'm just brainstorming here. Temporary housing would be the most viable solution to have a viable station thirteen. Here would be the specifications at a minimum. And that gives some. Just, you're not liking that.
No, I apologize for being late, but did we rule out the possibility of the residents up, uh, next to, uh?
We did.
Okay, I must have missed that.
Because we knew you were late, so we ruled that out. I'm kidding, it was just, it was just, wasn't working on distances and crossing the road and a whole lot. A whole lot of stuff was, 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 was sort of in the negative column on that.
Tammy asked me that question, that's why.
That's a good one.
So maybe an easier way to get to this is, let's just make it the work of us tonight to try to develop a spec. We don't even need to make the motion right now, let's just develop the spec as part of our work tonight.
Okay.
And then when we, if we agree on, if we come up with the right thing, we agree on it, and then we make the motion to send that to the board of selectmen.
That's fine, yeah, and then we can share that with, with almost anybody. All right, so right now it's called a motion, but, uh. But, I'm just gonna type specification so I don't lose my train of thought. So let's. So let's just start throwing stuff up, what else does it mean?
Okay, so let's talk about the two bathroom thing. Required, not required. If it's a one person at a time, it can be sex, right?
Yeah.
So it doesn't have to be two bathrooms. The one I mentioned happened to be two bedroom, two bathroom, right?
Every, most of them that I researched had two bathrooms in it.
Yeah.
Um, and those were.
I think we might have looked at the same site because they were at forty to seventy thousand dollars.
But if you're just, it's sort of specifications go, if it's minimum two, right, or one bathroom.
Yeah, minimum one, right, yeah.
With a shower.
With a shower.
I wrote unisex personal hygiene facilities are allowable, two would be preferable. Does that sound fair?
Do we have a rough set of a square footage that propane heat this captures?
Right now we're propane. Everything, yeah, we don't have oil there, so.
Do we, do we want to do propane or do we want to do electric?
Propane. I think most of them.
Most of them are standard with propane.
Propane's near, we'd have to spend money to run electric out there.
I know. We're gonna have to run electric out there.
We want to run small electric out there, not big electric to the heat.
Alright, so garden boxes, uh, satellite TV, we need satellite TV, you know, cable hookup. I mean, let's just.
Cable at the property, we would run that.
I mean.
Of a residential unit.
I'm typing it, I guess.
The advantage of, the advantage of single wide is cheaper setup and cheaper removal at the end, easy, probably easier to resell.
Also easier to get into.
I don't want you to be hanging. Cheese, uh.
Either just came from nursing or welding. Welding on the way home.
Freddy, just to catch you up, what we're talking about now is some sort of a, we're we're looking for, we've talked about having a draft motion. Send to the first selectman about actually, uh, the viability of, we we would all agree that a temporary structure is the right thing to do rather than build inside. Or other things, so now we're just talking about specifications because. Uh, Mr. Matisha says he's been in contact with the, our guard, uh, legislators outside the circle. They need some specs, they need something to talk about, so we need to give them something that they can hold in their hands and say this is what they need. So now we're talking about needs, specifications. We've agreed that it's gonna be a two bedroom, one or two bath, day room. Uh, C O with life safety support systems. Personal hygiene, kitchen, kitchen, yeah, I wrote down full kitchen, uh, garden boxes. Little pool, wake, pull and back.
Patio.
Patio, yeah.
This was like a clarity, and these are minimum requirements, so.
I wrote minimum.
If Senator Gordon comes up with a three bedroom.
The third bedroom will come and give you an office. Well, that's right, absolutely right.
I I emphasize with them when I spoke with them earlier that, uh, we're not seeking to make a big investment, there are purposes beyond this. This stage, so we're, we're anxious that, uh, you come up with something.
Alright, so what we have right now, the building would need to have at a minimum, I'm gonna get, we can parse out the language later. Two bedrooms, bath, shower, day room, full kitchen. Um, I ruled, they ruled twice. Uh, day room, living room space, full certificate of occupancy with all standard life states, like, safety support. Uh, unisex personal hygiene facilities are allowable, two would be preferable, I want, I was gonna, I want to say our specs are two baths.
What about like a washer dryer?
Why, no, why limit it if we come up with it, if we come up with an opportunity to get a single bath, we don't want to say no. Why don't we just say minimum standard is one bathroom? We don't have to complicate. They had two, they had male and female, but they were multi pork bathrooms. So you have to separate because you can have more than one person in there at a time. If if it's two people and it's a single unisex bathroom accessible to either person, it's only one person at a time.
Um, when we say, just, just clarify, when we say bath. Um, we do mean.
Full bath.
Full bath. I'll just say full bath.
You need a shower, you need a toilet, you need a sink.
We're saying we do want propane heat, not electric.
If they can only find one with electric, we'll make it work, but propane would be, uh, preferred.
Yeah, propane, we'll say that's our spec, air conditioning, uh, full sore hookups. Don't know, holding tanks or whatever.
Wait, are you saying air conditioning?
I did write down air conditioning, cable ready. And I just wrote down single wide residential unit for someone to do that.
By saying air conditioning, do you, does that imply like central air? Don't you need like window units out like a separate purchase?
Yeah, because if you put it in there as a minimum.
Right.
Right, they could be trying to find something with central air. Well, um, well. I'm just saying window or air.
Window or central.
Window or central, that's what I meant to say. Window or central. Well, just because some of them have like the the whole glory cut in and stuff, they they have some of that. Well, my my minimal, minimal.
But again, they find more than.
Exactly, you can do window.
Cousin Eddie will cut a hole and hang an air conditioner on there, it's not gonna be fun.
People are gonna look at this, they're gonna read to the end of it anyway, but it gives people something to shake their fist on, it's like, this is what they need. Otherwise, they don't really say, what do they need? I don't know, what else, what else, what else they need? Um, they they, uh, they're, where's their gear stored in in the house? So is that, will the, will Station thirteen be be able to be used to store? There, it will not go into the firehogs. They can't go into the hut, so.
Just because, no, just because there is mold and stuff like. People's gear that stays there for days, uh, so the idea I think we have right now is if the shed, as long as the shed stays. Is to use the outdoor shed for now.
And that will be that's another, enough protection for mice and everything and.
Well.
Or or should there be a, should we ask for storage? I bet you they got twenty foot, forty foot storage. I don't know, we we've been trying to figure this out.
Yeah, I mean, feel like I have so much space too.
I know, I mean, you're gonna, you might have to.
Uh, can temporarily have it next to the truck. We can, but what are you doing? Totally there for their shift.
You, but what do you do with it not during their shift? So when they're not there, we can't take it home anymore.
That's a, that's a whole of the the staff. Well, that's kind of the idea, is to put it in the shed for now, as long as the shed stays.
Mice inside is not a good idea. Well, no, right, but you're saying as long as the shed stays, is there a possibility it won't stay?
Well, we had talked as if it needed to take the shed down to put that thing on the grass.
Alright, so if the shed goes, it sounds like there'll be, do you still call it, what do you, what do you call the gear? So if if the shed goes.
We need some type of.
Some some storage for a bunker gear, so I'll, I'm gonna say, a, uh, what, a twenty foot container? Do it.
Yeah, well, correct, but does your gear, I mean, usually their firehouse is heated. Yeah, now, now what's gonna stop you guys? You guys use water, you put that gear back in a cold, a cold container, you're gonna get bullied.
But that's gonna be, well, the, my fear is, is in the firehouse, and we're gonna have the same issue, because the firehouse is gonna be very warm.
Right, so you got the same problem with the firehouse, so maybe you need something that's gonna store gear.
I thought the heat was fully functional now.
It is, but it's not gonna.
We can't.
It's not well insulated.
We keep it as low as possible.
Isn't it better than my shed that's outside?
Yeah, I don't.
It's probably more climate, probably drier in that firehouse, even with the mold than it is in like October.
Well, is is there still mold in the fire?
I thought Serpro was hired to remove it.
So. Do, is there, are they testing?
We have not tested anything since Serpro finished.
When Serpro finished. Probably shouldn't have tested again.
Well, so it sounds like maybe some funding for a temporary. Uh, gear storage place within Station thirteen, would that be a reasonable request?
We have the gear racks, um.
Wait, I, we can drive to the station and see how those.
She said it would be much better than outside in a cold.
Well, yeah, I agree.
We got those gear racks, it's off the floor.
But it sounds like you're gonna spend, probably gonna spend five K just on. Trying to get something so you can store things and.
So people don't want to.
Just throw it on the ground. You gotta have.
We have gear storage, so we have gear racks now. I think the worst case is, is you end up, if you don't have, um, do you have self-contained gear storage? You have those lockers in the middle. Well, put it there, I mean, that keeps mice out, right?
Yeah, they're open grid, it's in, it's ventilated to dry them out and stuff like that, it's just people have grid.
So maybe instead of complicating the living space back, because it seems like these don't go hand in hand.
Right.
We've been in the living space back, and then we talk about, do we need to build a small room inside the station?
Right.
That's climate controlled.
Right.
You know, maybe for a few thousand dollars, we build a little closet. Big closet, little room, inside the fire station with a small ventilation unit in it or something, and get a space for the gear.
Not, yeah, I'm sure we can do something, I'm not. Like Simmons finished the house.
Sorry, so where we just said. Full sore hookups, cable ready, single wide residential unit, what else? Let her load it up.
I would, I would take the cable already out, I mean, we, we have internet access there, so.
I'm just, you know, we're just throwing it on there, because we don't mention it. It's harder to mention it afterwards.
But I think some of that stuff that 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 you're talking about, though, is it's almost standard, but.
I don't think it'll be a surprise, but. You never know, you don't know what people know.
Hey, maybe clutter farms you built, donate a shed, use it as a.
It just sounds very much like something you can see in.
It's something that you see in.
So there's a generic term for it, I'd love to know what that is.
Manufacturing gives you the whole gamut of things.
Yes. But I mean, they have those parks and other parts of the country where you basically can hook it up and you drive it in and right to the front steps, and the steps are permanent. And you you rent the pad, you don't own, you own your home, but not the pad, and you rent the pad every one. And they're double wides, and people live in them for twenty five, thirty years, raise kids, and everything.
Yeah, they seldom move.
Yeah, sure, they seldom. Alright, do you think we have enough?
Yes.
Alright, so now what do we want to call this? We're not calling it a, a motion, I'm gonna say, well, I don't, I don't, I think it's a emotion. Why don't we just say a motion for, uh, let's see, it's two things here, first, we agree. I, what, how about this, we make a motion. That we agree. The committee, uh, agrees that a temporary, a manufactured temporary structure. Is the best course of action, real simple, so we get that out of the way, are we all in agreement with that?
Located at that station.
Right, okay, let me, let me just, give me a second here, so I'm just gonna say, motion.
Just thinking ahead, Rob, what's the most benign way to describe a structure if we do have to go to Z B A? Temporary manufacturer. Thank you. You're large Z B A, just tell them what you wanna do.
Temporary, I can't, I typed, we're watching. Temporary manufactured.
Living quarters.
Dwelling.
Dwelling.
Manufactured dwelling unit.
To include.
Well, it's gonna be a separate thing.
That's the specs.
That's the spec dwelling unit. Be. Installed, located, what was. He, well, I want to say, what what you just said.
It's gotta be located.
Right now, I have, the committee recommends a temporary manufactured dwelling unit. Be located at four twenty six, four twenty six. River Road, Station thirteen. River Road, Station, was capitalized. Thirteen. For. Twenty four seven housing and paid staff. That succinct enough? I think it is, twenty four seven. Housing of paid staff, okay. The committee recommends a temporary manufactured dwelling unit to be located at four twenty six River Road, Station thirteen. To, uh, for twenty four seven housing and paid staff. Pretty clear, that's, that's, that's the motion. So we get that out of the way, that's what we're all agreeing on, out of all the other options. Does that work?
Yes.
Alright, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make my motion, this committee recommends a temporary manufactured dwelling unit. Be located at four twenty six River Road, Station thirteen, for twenty four seven housing with paid staff. Alright, motion remained a second, and any discussion? We can change, the committee recommends a temporary manufactured dwelling unit.
Okay, you can stop there. I told me sure that. It's explicitly clear that it's not a permanent structure for the next twenty years.
Right. Actually, I'm gonna take out, as I said, committee recommend, because there's no such thing as a temporary manufacturer, it's a manufactured dwelling unit. They located at four twenty six.
Be temporarily located at.
Temporary, that's the way to say, be temporarily. Another big word, guys are killing me. Tempor, I have to stop it out, I caught up on phonics. Temporarily located, that's, thank you, Todd, that's the right way to say, the committee recommends. I withdraw my further motion, by by prior movement. The committee recommends a manufactured dwelling unit temporarily located at four twenty six River Road. Uh, Station thirteen for, for to allow.
Can you say like, until, as this committee, until we have permanent solution? A permanent fix.
But not, sure, until a permanent.
That's what we're here for.
Alright, let's try this out again. Soil and green is being, the committee recommends a manufactured dwelling unit be temporarily located at four twenty six River Road Station, River Road. Station thirteen, twenty four seven housing and paid staff until a permanent solution can be developed. That sound clear? The average person would understand.
Clear, clear, concise.
Alright, I'll say it for the record, for the record. Motion, committee recommends a manufactured dwelling unit be temporarily located at four twenty six River Road. Station thirteen, twenty four seven housing of paid staff until a permanent solution can be developed. Motion's debated second, and any discussion?
Do we have to add procured in here?
Not yet, I think this is just that we all agree that this is the course of action we're gonna take. So, and we're all agreeing on that, all in favor? Point spoke, I oppose, abstentions, motions passed, we will, we recommend. Hey, look now, let's talk about the specifications. We're gonna make a motion for specifications, and that. It is that the town recommend, the committee recommends the town acquire. A temporary dwelling unit suitable to meet the operational needs, including. But not limited to twenty four housing of paid staff, allowing for return full operation to Station thirteen. On a temporary basis, not perpetually, so that it dovetails with what we just said. And then the building has to have at a minimum, two bedrooms. Bath, shower, day room, living room space, full kitchen, full certificate of occupancy with all standard life support. Full bath, propane heat, air conditioning. Full sore hookups and single wide, and 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 I just wrote single wide residential, you might take that out.
Then we're not gonna shoot one looking for something.
Right, it was just. It was a shout out, so I don't like that. Right, you said we should take out air conditioning, you still think so?
Well, I thought that you have, you have like bath and shower, and then you have full bath.
Well, because I wrote. Well, because I wrote.
I just have a quick question, cause you might want to, cause he may be able to answer it. Is it? Is a firehouse now considered commercial property?
It's it's zoned.
Uh, well.
Based on which set of rules?
Well, like, well.
It's an R eighty with a special permit.
Wasn't like.
It's an R eighty.
Is R eighty?
Okay, so that's zoning. So my only question is. Will the building official or whoever require that it has to have ADA compliance? I know we've ran into other places.
Not for a temporary.
Well, I don't know.
So is.
We haven't run into it in this town, but I know other towns have.
Is it for public access?
It is not for public access. It is not.
Okay, you would not need ADA.
No.
No, your, your living quarters would not be for public access. If someone needed to come to the fire station to talk to you, you could meet them at the fire station.
I just wanna make sure, cause I would hate to. Yeah.
What about members of the firing body, can they, um, are, are, uh, people that.
The only people that really issues, allow to serve us.
They, they are, but they don't work in a capacity that they would be in there.
Okay, so that's.
The plan would be, because we're not gonna be meeting, I think Ron and I discussed this, and. Our meetings and everything else would still be held at the south, in the Bay of the South Station.
South Station, yeah.
So.
Yeah, I don't think ADA would be a problem, right?
Okay, so somewhere, well, a little temporary. In the D A couldn't be performing the duties. That would seem to be over there, you know, I didn't know what.
I think your work.
I think the only other.
Oh, absolutely, and that's for us, that's everything they have to do. Yeah, you got the required.
And I think you're right about that, C P is already the answer, if there is some.
Change of, change of.
Change regulations for an emergency situation.
And and I think.
That is more generic than just a fire department.
Right, exactly, but I think that's probably a reasonable thing to.
But I think that's already written in there anyway.
I think so, I I couldn't, I looked briefly, but I.
Has to be sub.
Yeah, it's it's.
Government?
You did hear yourself saying.
Now, Peter wants to be able to bring something to, uh, NUCIOs and the Gordons.
Or gaggle of, uh, government.
Yeah, well, that's good, we want them involved, we want them involved now. Who do we have to get permission from in order to share this? Anyone? It's public records.
Public record, and I think you're in a, you're in a fact finding mode.
Senator Gordon said you'd like to attend our meetings as well, so I'll send him the schedule of that.
I think it's just, I think for our own administrative process, typically, the chair is responsible for communication out of the committee. Or approving communication, unless the committee votes to authorize another representative, so what we do is we have make a motion. To authorize Pete to continue these conversations.
Awesome.
And then that gives him the official okay to be communicating, instead of having each of us deciding we wanna call individual representatives. And having forty-seven different communications.
The only, the only question I have is Senator Gordon keeps calling me, so I don't want.
But you're the chief of the fire department, you still have a right.
I just don't wanna step on anybody else's toe, you know, but I I think it's important that I have the.
Right, just like if Chief Snyder had a conversation, or President Knight had a conversation about something. Make sure that's fine, but committee wise, you should tell, we should authorize our representatives.
Okay, well, let's entertain a motion for that, I'll write it down.
Are we in the middle of a motion right now?
I don't know.
Oh, we're on specifications.
Alright, uh, we're going to vote, but the motion is. We made a motion on, that we all agreed, I'm sorry, you weren't here for that. Missed the whole thing, it was very good, okay, the committee recommends, we made this motion, it was made second and then approved in N S. The committee recommends a manufacturing dwelling unit, a manufactured dwelling unit be temporarily located at four twenty-six River Road. Station thirteen, twenty-four seven housing and paid staff until a permanent solution can be developed. We agree on that. Right, so now we're speaking of specifications. The committee recommends the town acquire temporary building suitable with a minimum specifications.
Those well.
And we have.
As well.
Yeah.
Two bedrooms, full kitchen, day room, living room space, full CO with standard life safety supports.
The only you did is you got rid of the cable.
Full bath, yeah, and I, and I, I had baths duplicated a couple times.
You think it's the rest of CO?
I can take that out.
Yeah, life safety learning devices.
Yeah, do what? What, what do you want in there?
Life safe, life safety learning devices.
Learning device.
I didn't think that'd be part of the ninety-five. Life safety features, just say light safety features. Yeah, they have to, if it's a new one, they have to.
Okay, life safety features, full bath, propane heat. Air conditioning window or central and, uh, full sore hookups, anything else that we should have in there? No.
Should I be any more specific?
Good start.
I think just price wise, you're gonna be in a single wide anyway, you want something that comes on one. I, I think price wise, you're gonna be in a single wide, if you go to a double wide, you're automatically, the cheapest double wides I saw were like thirty thousand dollars.
If you find one, great, but don't limit yourself.
Yeah, I think just leave it, just leave it alone, right, just leave it alone.
I'll, I'll share that with Adrian.
Yeah, I think price will drive us there, or we'll get whatever we get, we'll get happy, it could be a triple wide, that meets the spec.
And we have the space, should we be so fortuitous?
I don't assume we'll actually get a triple.
Well, there's room. I, I didn't wanna add that, uh, Senator Gordon's very active in getting that. State parcel of land, uh, deeded to us, meaning the town, for fire department to eliminate the confusion that exists now. The drainage is and so forth, uh, that was encouraging as well.
Yeah, that's the one we learned last time, that the initial property ends up the flagpole, right?
Not even.
Not even that.
Even that far.
Was it?
Inside of the island. Well, then. But prior to that, just before, well. Forget that, forget I said anything. Alright, are we ready to make a motion? Okay, I'm gonna make a motion. And again, under discussion, you can talk about it all over again, the committee recommends. The town of Wellington acquire a temporary building suitable to meet the operational needs, including. But not, but not limited to twenty-four seven housing of paid staff, allowing for return full operation to Station thirteen. On a temporary basis and not in perpetuity, the building would need to have at a minimum, two bedrooms, full kitchen. Dayroom slash living room space, life safety features, full bath. Propane heat, air conditioning window or central and full sore.
Second.
This was made a second, and any discussion? All, well in favor? Opposed, abstentions, none, the motion passed, okay. Well, that's some good work done, so what are the next steps? I will. Uh, copy these motions, I will send them all to you, also send them to all of you. If you have any feedback at all, let me know, I won't CC the, the board of selectmen yet, until we get everything, this, once you read things. From me, sometimes it's pop out that I don't always catch when I'm listening. Um.
And what would be helpful is if I have your approved minutes, like a share with these legislators, so that.
I've been lost official paper, I guess.
Okay. Um, I would, yeah, feel free to share any, oh yeah, so now.
When will we have our minutes, I guess?
Well, what Shannon said that, you know, she's. She's the one, and I don't know, I guess we can try to find somebody else and hire him, but. But now it's her. And, uh.
I think you within seven days.
I say she's on vacation, she's like the two.
On vacation, but I can, I I'll type up the minutes on this meeting, I suppose.
Thank you, Andy.
Um, what was here? Everybody.
It has a town stamp on it, approved by the town clerk.
Yes, I have to get that up.
I can send that to, uh. All these doers.
No, that's fine, I'll, I'll type up the minutes tomorrow and get it out to everybody.
Do you know, um, once, once the minutes are submitted to the town clerk, does she push them out via email to? People who have subscribed? Or is that?
That's not through the, I think it's, I think Tish is the one that loads it into that website side. I think Tish does that side of it, and then if you are subscribed, that's automatic.
Okay. So it's not necessarily Robin that's doing that?
No, I think, I think it, I think Tish is the one who runs that part of it, if I understand correctly. When I did, uh, Board of Finance Minutes or, um, School Building Committee. I would send them to, uh, the town clerk and to Tish at the same time.
Yeah, that's what, that's what Robin has, and then Tish, Ivan and her. Cause they all do different parts.
Usually the ones that are pushed out have the receipt by town clerk stamped on.
So maybe she, yeah, so maybe she is sending them over to Tish out of her.
Okay, so you, you took them, you, you were the guy that took the minute?
Oh, you know, no, that was agendas, agendas I would send to all three.
Okay.
Minutes, I didn't process the minutes, that was, those are others from processing. It was for a lot of the time.
Yes, yeah. I like the idea of Peter being the point man for these people that he's made contact with, however, we, they do have a lot of conversations that aren't with Peter. If you become the point man, how do we coordinate? Like, if Gordon or somebody wants to talk to me for whatever reason.
I'm simply gonna do whatever to get it further to you.
Right, then that sort of takes you out of being point man, and that doesn't seem, well, but it matters because if you're the point man, then you gotta know what's going on. That's just a. If you're gonna, if we're gonna designate you as the guy, then you gotta know what everybody's saying, kinda, otherwise you lose your mojo. Yeah, you don't have nothing.
They have the mojo.
Anyways, they're not, you're not, so, anyway, you met, you mentioned like that we should make a formal recognition. That Peter is contacting, and that's okay?
How about this? Well, I'm moved that we authorize Pete Latencich. To represent the committee to government liaisons with coordination with the chair.
I second that. Any discussion? All in favor?
I got that coordination thing at the end, when you were talking about it, they wanted to talk to you or whatever.
Uh, can you write that down? Quickly or?
I don't even remember what I said.
You're. In the recording, in the recording. Technology, wait, it's again, okay, alright, so.
So, before we hand this off to the selectmen.
Right.
How much of it do we wanna prepare, do we wanna have, we are probably gonna need, we're gonna neither need, neither. Sorry, we're gonna have to either hand them the pricing with this, the target pricing. Or we're gonna have to be prepared at the meeting they review this, to discuss the pricing, because they're not gonna be able to move it on until they have a number.
Well, that's true, but are we, I, I'm not, I'm, I don't know, correct me. Is that critical at this stage? Right now, we're trying to get people's minds in a certain trajectory.
Well, let's work the schedule backwards.
Okay.
What, what should be our target date for getting it done, so that people are undercover? End of September, right?
That's what I'm saying.
End of September, we wanna complete. So, so you need the thing delivered around the first week of September, so you can do all the others.
Correct.
You're gonna need a couple of weeks to do all that stuff, probably. Right, so, it should be delivered in the beginning of September, which means it's gotta be procured. July or August, which means we have to get a spec out and get prices back, and then go through the approval process for funding. Which means we should have this ready probably last month.
Perfect, right? Right, well, I'm thinking this, this is like.
We spend too much time in discussion, we're gonna run out of that timeline.
But I'm thinking that this is like the warning order, this is like, you know, alright, this is what you need to prepare for, we don't have all the details yet, but prepare yourself. For this, now, details to follow, something like that, this is to get.
That's fine, we just have to throw, how soon we're gonna need those details, that's my point, and we need to be bringing in those details.
How are you gonna get, are you, you get pricing on?
We can probably get pricing tomorrow, was maybe the best, right?
At least you have some idea.
Well, that's right.
And availability.
Anybody wanna spearhead that, anybody wanna?
You authorize me to contact, I made a list of the different.
You don't, yeah, you got the time for that?
And I'll get prices for the, is there, is there anyone else that can help? You have other ideas?
Yeah, I only had one question is, how long would we let? Peter and the state work on trying to find something.
Well, he should, he.
Parallel activity. You should run, I, I agree with you, I guess.
No, right, it should be parallel, yeah, I mean, with.
Yeah, then whatever comes first.
Whatever they do is almost relevant.
Communicate to this backward timeline, and that will create, is there, they're very confused.
Hopefully some pressure.
They're very confused right now, what we're doing.
Yeah.
You know, so I, I think this will, this, this is very good, this will bring some clarity.
Right, so when you get these motions, when I send them to you tomorrow, you can share those. And then say, no, we don't have pricing yet, you know, I'm not.
Get away for the minutes.
You're not authorizing Mike to write a check, you're authorizing him to get.
Right, right, right.
No, right, no, I, yeah, 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 that's fine.
Yeah, I'm just basically saying, the committee should give somebody permission to contact these vendors and get some pricing.
Mike, if you come across anything that generically describes our spec.
I think in the industry.
Yes, that will be very helpful to a guy like Adrian, who's a Jeff Stafford.
Yeah, the people who do the fire trailers for, um, it's called like Emergency Temporary Shelters Incorporated or something like that, I was looking at their website today. I just happen to be passing one of their trucks on the way to work this morning. Towing a trailer, and it said Emergency Temporary Shelters on the back of this mobile truck, I was like, wow, that's timely.
Right there, should have gotten it from. Is there anybody that you, that can share this load, so you don't have to do it all yourself?
About, uh, I have, uh, Alex Moore, alternate member, and I work on it.
I'm not an alternate member, not on the committee.
Oh, that's right, sorry, I didn't mean to bring up that one, it rubs. Really didn't.
Can't assign homework to an.
How would I work with Chief Moore? As a technical expert?
That's fine, does, does anybody wanna? Make a motion to, um. Have, uh, like the co be our. Spearhead for temporary dwelling.
Pricing.
Pricing, so moved. All in favor? Anything, we had a second, we got a second, and, any discussion, anything, okay, will, will the town acquire three bids? You know, probably, but, who knows?
We'll, we'll try to come up with, we'll try to come up with enough vendors, we can at least get target pricing, right, for the approval process?
Right.
And then we do the procurement process.
And we have to assume that this is going to be send that two hundred thousand dollars.
If it, if it passes, if the budget passes, it doesn't. Right, even if it does, I mean.
So, I do have a question about that, the two hundred thousand between the one kind for Wellington Hill, the eighty or whatever left from. Their old savings, two hundred thousand is separate people.
Yes, and that was a point I tried to make the other night at the Board of Finance meeting.
So there's two hundred thousand assigned to in this year's budget?
No, in the current, in this current year, fiscal year, approved by the taxpayers, there's a hundred and ten, right, Tom?
Yes.
It was for Wellington Hill, right, Wellington Hill attempted to get access to it a few months ago, was.
Yes.
Voted down at the selectmen's meeting. That hundred and ten remains in the budget, approved, approved by taxpayers, I brought it up the Board of Finance the other night, everyone's like, no, 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 that's not true. That got swept forward till next year, and I kept thinking, you can't sweep money forward in the approved year's budget. So I asked a bunch of questions after the meeting and the next day, and then Donna said. No, you're right, there's a hundred and ten still in this year's budget, of course there is, because the taxpayer's gonna prove to spend it tomorrow, so it has to still be in the budget, right?
But it's two different things.
It's two different things.
Cause the hundred and ten thousand.
I'm just saying, the hundred and ten thousand is in this year's budget, it is not part of the two hundred for next year, that's.
Well, it's not part of the two hundred for this committee, it's not.
Right, right, I'm just saying, that's a separate.
That has nothing to do with this.
Yes, which is, right, that's why I'm saying, it's in this year's approved budget.
That's what I was trying to figure out.
I, I requested two hundred thousand dollars to continue on the building project to twenty-five Old Farms Road. That got left in the C I P for this year's.
What is to the building committee not add a.
Right, now it's, now it's on the.
Right, and that is in the coming year.
Right, which has.
The July line, right. But of course, that budget's not approved yet.
Right.
To the chairman's point. Yes, but yes, that two hundred is its own thing in next year, a hundred and ten is in this year, and that's the only point I was. Rambling on so much about is, the, this, mixing the two is not true.
Yeah, that's what I was afraid of, is that they mixed.
No, that's what they said at the meeting the other night, and. No, that's what they said at the meeting the other night, and I knew it couldn't be true, so when I asked the questions later, it turns out it is not.
The one ten was voted by the taxpayers for, thirty, eighty thousand that we have.
Was, is still in this budget.
Yeah.
Right, which is in fund.
So. If we're not so fortunate as to have, uh. One given to us, meaning temporary dwelling. And this is our number one priority to secure this housing. Which funding source would that be? Would it be the one ten or the two hundred?
Well, it was, the one ten has nothing to do with it, it's to the chief's point, that is in this current year's capital budget for a different thing. Whether it gets approved to allocate it or not has nothing to do with this committee. The two hundreds starting July one, so. Is something that we would potentially be tabbing, you know, to.
For whatever, right. Hopefully we don't have to.
Okay, right, yes, got it, yes.
And maybe it's something shared, I mean, there will be, we'll have to tap into it, because even if the state did come through something.
You might have to bulk it up.
All, all the, all the ancillary stuff would have to sure, would come up as something, so.
And then it could be as simple as allocations.
Yeah, 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 with just, for that money just.
Something as simple as the complicated process.
Yeah.
That's, alright, cause this will, I believe this will have to go from us to Board of Selectmen.
Right.
Board of Selectmen to Board of Finance, back to Board of Selectmen to call it town.
Right. Right. So, these are simply right now.
Right, I mean.
Yeah, no, I think that's how it works, yeah, I, uh.
Cause the Board of Finance has to recommend to the town, to the selectman to call the meeting. To approve the allocation.
Right, right, I don't know, like, in planning and zoning, when I was chairman, I would go before the Board of Finance and plead for the budget, you know, I would. I would outline the budget directly, I didn't go to the Board of Select.
Correct.
I went right to the Board of Finance, so I don't know what.
But then the Board of Finance would send the budget, they would tell the Board of Selectmen to call a town hearing and.
Yes, right, so is that.
We have to add, that's the same process, except the requestor, in this case, is not planning and zoning, the requestor is the Board of Selectmen, cause we're subcommittee.
Cause we're sub, right, that, that, that's the part that I was, I wasn't really sure how to type this.
Right.
We're not, we're not a department, we're subcommittee of the B O S.
So we recommend to the Board of Selectmen that they ask for the money, they go to the Board of Finance, say, can we please have this money, and the Board of Finance says, good, you call the meeting and ask for the money.
Yeah, 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 okay, right now, these are just warning orders, what I call warning orders, say, this is the direction we're going in. And then we'll get more details, where to get into the, the actual. More details to follow, something like that, I'll, uh. I think that'll work.
Details on like budget pricing or to follow?
I don't know, I, I would think that when I send, I, I think I will send these out to all of us, so we can look at it and make sure that. You don't wanna. Massage them all, you know, even if we do too quickly at our next meeting, like I said, we have time, we're not gonna do, I don't wanna do anything until after the budget passes, I think throwing. Quests, quests for money right now would be. Just confusing to people, it wouldn't, just money the right. Wouldn't matter, you're not gonna get it anyway, right?
Well, we've got about five weeks to be lined up for the new budget year.
Yep.
And.
Maybe we'll have more, maybe we can always add to it, we can always.
Maybe at this point, too much, what was the, what kind of money in this committee?
But would probably wouldn't be.
No, I agree, I agree.
Good point, Ralph, like, lots is more.
Yeah.
Lots is more.
Yeah. But I mean, we're not, it's not to be secretive, but.
No, just want to ask for it.
Just not.
Yeah, that's just not, okay.
No, today is not the day to go out and knock on doors and say, you know, can we approve this?
This is what we're gonna be looking for, guys, in the support.
Well, no, go funding, we do want go funding.
So while you're distributing this out to the committee members for more thoughts.
Yes.
It'll be Gordon trying to get more information moving with the state and what a federal, whatever, governmental rest. And I'll be trying to get some pricing together. This hopefully comes back to the next meeting.
Yeah. Right. Which is when, I wrote it down.
Two and six.
Yep, two and six. Okay, who's going to Wellington, Diane Zanick?
I'm not walking down.
Yep.
We're cooking hamburgers and hot dogs, somebody says.
Right, mine down, cool.
So was that discuss funding? Look at the agenda, just make.
Just, I mean, it was just part of the, we did discuss it, that, that was part of, just, just what I wanted to talk about is, we don't wanna do anything till after the budget season.
Well, one last thing, Andy, so, and whatever we do, existing trailer unit will defray that cost potentially, right? We'll be getting rid of that.
Yeah, uh, I mean, at the end of the cycle, I think.
No, 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 we're a trailer man.
No, uh, very good, I, I can't speak to that, cause I don't know anything about that trailer, tell us all.
So the, so the town of Wellington, all of it, it's a town asset to do, which. But that's important, I would just say, whatever we do, we have to.
Now, lateral area.
That's a good point.
I know there was talks of when we were done, if they probably worked needed it for the winter item.
No. The best thing to do would be, assuming we get you in this other alternate for September thirtieth, would be to clean that and winterize it. Cause fall is a terrible time to sell a camper.
I agree.
Wait till the spring and.
Oh, good point.
Yep, it's probably worth. Twenty percent more in the spring.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's that or take, take reservations from town residents to rent it or something.
Oh, there you go.
That's what they go funding, it's better.
We could maybe just set up a campground down at the, at four twenty six River Road.
Well, under hill.
Yeah.
Yeah. The view, right? Yeah, proper.
Good cell phone reception.
Oh, you're a cell phone? What was cell phone?
Sounds kinda sexy, cell phone.
Alright, well.
Well, continuing the theme of Lucy Goosey.
Yeah, hey, it's, uh, it's, uh.
Well, did you say moving on the whole business?
Yeah.
Ralph and I.
As a matter of fact, we're moving on the whole business, and we moved, uh. Um. Well, I just said ongoing analysis of current and future. Um. Emergency services, fire front facilities, if that's what we need to talk about all day, and the second one was the, uh. Uh, location studies, the, the location studies, uh, like I said, I read the one from East Grammy. I, I read some from some other towns, they didn't call them specifically location studies, but. Uh, many towns had, had recently, the last two or three years.
And so, if I might suggest, see, if you look at the two emails I sent you, I sent you the East Grammy one with the highlights picked out. Um, and I sent you a separate email with links to a whole bunch of completed studies for different departments around, they're similar. Each one has a little bit of a variation on how that city or their consultant did it, but they're all the same basic framework. And if you feel it's appropriate, maybe between now and our next meeting, you get it out right away.
Okay.
To the group, people have a chance to look at it, and then when we come back and discuss, maybe people will feel they know it enough to make decisions.
Do you feel they should be distributed? Should I send it out to everybody?
I think so, cause we're asking people to eventually vote on if or if not we're gonna do this.
Yeah, right, right, right.
That's a good idea, but I would.
But what is, right?
We said if I have to, it's like, oh, why not, if you think they should be sent out, I'll send them up. What's for me?
Okay. You know, in that way, you know, if you think about the discussion we had in the last meeting, it was, you know, what is the value of this, does it make sense, you know? Do we spend outside money, do we try to do it internally?
Right.
If people look at what the product is, they might have a better sense of whether they feel yay or nay of that.
Sure.
Um, good point, Mike.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And people can consider, you know, what is the value of it, or what's the worst case scenario if we do do it?
Right.
You know?
Alright, well.
One of the things like, I'll bring up. Uh, I don't know if anyone wants it, I went back and did a lot of research on the maps for Station thirteen, I have, uh, nineteen sixty, uh. Relocation number thirty two drawings.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, nineteen ninety drawings, I have the original nineteen eighty plans. For Station thirteen. Uh, the work that was done on Trash Road, because all, all of this was chasing, where does the water go? Which is why I did this. I have these maps, if anyone's interested in seeing them or getting a copy of them, I'm.
Yeah, physical, like physical drawing, like, no, no, they're, they're all digital, just.
Okay. So maybe you can send them to the chair, and you can send them out to them.
Yeah, well, if people have an interest.
Well, your vice chair, I guess.
Yeah, um. How do we get them up on a big screen, so we can look down and, yep. Right now, we can't.
Not right now.
Ralph, Ralph, with all that, that data, accelerate our ability to resolve the granite issue by finding this storm rain and directing the water.
The quickest way to do that is, is to get a septic.
I was supposed to, I forgot about that.
Chase up. And, and, yeah, and run the camera up and follow it on the.
Forgot about that, I had it on my list, my to-do list, I forgot about. But you said Admiral.
Admiral.
Said Admiral Septic, Skips will, we checked with Skips.
I, I, they won't do it?
Yeah. Admiral did it for Willington Hill up here, and, and they, I watched the camera, they mapped their way down the pipe.
Talked to Skips before, they had no interest. Chase over.
Alright, I, I'll, no, I'll call him.
I'll call him, isn't it?
You're gonna call Admiral?
No, I'll, I'll, I'll call a couple.
Alright, I'm not gonna do it, then, you're gonna do it.
Okay.
It'd be good to put this issue behind us, obviously.
No, I said, I, I shouldn't.
I mean, I've got a good intuitive sense of where it might be from these maps, because that's what I work with all the time. Um, but it's, there's no aspills. So just because that's way, the way it's displayed on these maps, doesn't mean that's the way it went in the ground.
Right, yeah.
And the best thing is that just.
Yeah, Admiral's thing worked great, they did the, we didn't know where the septic system was up here at the church, we eventually found. We had to dig up pipes and trace, but they came and they put the camera in, they ran it down the pipe. They could tell exactly, as they unroll it, it tells you how many feet it's gone out, and then they went over with a metal detector in the yard and found exactly where it was, oh, that's where the pipe turns.
Yeah.
And mapped it all.
That is, well, that's what they do every, all the time, so that's, okay. So Ralph, you're gonna call, alright.
I'll do that. So we, if I just can interject real quick, what we did have was, how it works is able to get, they have a big camera truck. Uh, but they can't make turns.
Yeah, it's ninety degrees turns.
There's ninety degrees turns, so the camera can't make.
Which end did you go in from?
From the building.
Okay. So you did an upper GI.
Yes.
So, if Admiral does the lower GI from the, where the cement pipe comes out. On the side of Trash Road, that's an easy spot to go back the other way, and you'll find the catch base and.
Is that pipe dry during the summer?
It's not dry right now.
It's not, no.
We, we occasionally see water coming out in the culvert, you know, whatever you wanna call it, of that reinforced concrete pipe that's there. There's at least some moisture coming out of it.
Well, I can run my robot up from that end, until I get to a turn or a, a some.
You got a robot?
Inspection robot.
Okay.
Yeah, on tracks.
That's pretty cool, why, why just do that, I wanna watch.
No, she's nursing.
This all works out, indeed.
You like.
Timeline for Frost to get the town crew to reconnect this range.
Well, no matter what, we're, if. Thinking past this temporary situation, if we get into a, a building, we're gonna have to know this information anyway.
Right, that's.
For planning purposes for another building.
It's gonna have to happen.
Because ideally, you'd like to preserve what you can.
Right.
If it makes sense to do so, rather than building a whole new septic system, or at least feel.
We did approach the health district when we first had the addition proposal, they said, based on the, uh, size of the system, we could use that. With the addition on building.
Yeah, you're really.
Had enough capacity, the difference was, back when it was designed and set up for doing, uh, fundraisers and having a lot of people in the building and that sort of thing, which we don't. Do anymore, but if we put the addition on, it will be. How, you know, whatever facilities goes along with that, that the, uh, system would handle whatever we were gonna do. Crazy, we wouldn't have to put a whole new septic system in.
Correct, we might be able to preserve it, based, I don't know what the new, newer goals are for that.
This is about two years, three years ago.
And I'll have my stick, my stick.
That's good. Alright. So. We have more to discuss. Um. Next meeting is at oh six, June twenty twenty four, six thirty down here. Uh, action items are the.
Everything we talked.
Everything, what are you talking about, no, distinctly though, uh. I gotta send these motions out to everybody, so that you guys, everyone can look at them, I'm going to forward the information that, that, uh, Mr. Co sent to me. You're gonna call Admiral, what else is that?
You're gonna, as he gets, as Mike gets information or phone to wherever, or, hopefully I did the right word, push that out, so we.
Yeah, yeah, well.
Right, I'll get it, I'll get it up to, I'll get it to him and then.
I'll be the gamekeeper on that, and I'll send everything, I'm gonna inundate you guys.
I'll be doing that, and Pete will be doing governmental relations.
And.
Preferably, Andy, when you send it out, don't send it out. On Wednesday evening.
Okay, Ralph. The day before the meeting.
Oh, 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 oh.
He's asking for a little lead time, just a little bit, then it's on me if I don't read it. Rather than being on you because you got it to me, like.
Okay. Just a promise.
That sounds really friendly.
Andy, bring the filing on.
Yes. Bring it, uh, bring it, uh, I, I did search of, with Shannon of those, uh.
Green tracks.
Yes, is there a way for Robin Campbell, should I go to her?
I was looking through emails, I know I am, I looked for it, sent it to you.
I, I. The right. I don't have.
Yeah, okay. Alex is gonna send them to, Alex is gonna send them. It's one contract with both departments.
Yeah. I would like to have the town's version.
Or approved, it's a photoc, everyone has a photocopy of the fully signed one.
Oh, yeah, I got it from, my copy came from the town.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
No, he's had it for a while.
I've had it for years.
Yeah.
Kind of, but he can send it, no, it's just. I'll, uh. I had it on Tuesday, I'm just trying to understand.
Better get much, what we, what we contract for, uh, which department? Bunch of fire trucks.
Sorry.
Bunch of crazy people.
I, I know I have. I didn't nominate myself.
Senator in this one.
Oh, you have?
Yeah.
Okay.
I knew that. I, well, yeah.
The thing is, during budget season, I, I found it because we were talking about, we were talking about what the, um. Fund fourteen is used for, seven, seventeen, sorry, seventeen is used for it. Um, and I was looking at it, I was reading it on my phone, so I know I have it.
What's the year, what's the initial year on?
Two thousand and six, something like that.
Two thousand and three?
You knew I wrote that?
Uh, it was, I don't think it goes back that far, I think it was like oh six, and then it was rewritten in oh nine.
Six, oh nine, and then I thought it was.
Something like that.
There's a twenty ten.
Twenty ten, affected twenty ten, so probably written in oh nine.
Thank you all. It exists a lot of places, none would have touched, except I think he just found it.
I got it, he was gonna do that.
Well, I'll send it to you. Hey, Mark, we're willing to see you though, go. Well, hey, I think we got some stuff done, um.
Good, action I discovered, so.
I think so, only one thing left.
Yeah. Oh, do you need my mic one, adjourned?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Second, third.
All the time for adjournment?
Hi.
Tuesday, I sticks.
Thank you all for coming.
I'm not recording.
Let's stop, stop recording.
Meeting adjourned at eight thirteen P M.
Samsung?
The mechanic study, you know, for the.
Oh, you were there.
Oh, oh, left, left. Right there, Eric, there we go.